Tonight will be a public hearing on a number of topics. You're those who want to make comment, we're welcome to take your comments. The agenda's been published. We'll allow two minutes on each topic should you have interest in commenting on each one of them. For the record, we have received two letters with views on the definition of finished grade and natural grade. Each member of the planning commission has received copies of those letters and they will be part of the record of the public hearing tonight, although we won't be reading those. So at this point in time, I see Mr. Ottley as signed on. Bob, do you have any comment that you care to make on any of the items subject to the public hearing?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you. I see also Ben Brindley is signed on.
Yeah, it took me a minute, sorry about that.
You're fine. Do you, are there any comments that you choose to make on any of the topics of the public hearing?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you. Jody, are there any others that signed on? With that then, we will conclude our public hearing and move into our agenda for the regular planning commission meeting. Called it order, showing at 7:05. Laurie, would you lead us in a pledge? And Severn, would you offer invocation?
Our tiny gracious eternal heavenly Father, we're grateful for this opportunity to meet together as a planning commission. And bless us in our deliberations this night that we may have thy Spirit to guide us and we may be able to make good and positive determinations that will be of benefit to the citizens of Woodland Hills. And we pray for these things in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
There are three planning commission members present, Laurie Thomas, Severn Johnson, Wayne Franzen, which comprise a quorum. Larry Henry is out of town and excused, and Ted is on standby for responding on a fire. He may show, he may not. So, that said, that's, we will... I guess I should just announce, is anybody interested in making any public comment about anything? Ben or Bob?
No, thank you.
No, I don't, thanks.
All right, thank you. Move on to the business. We've got approval of the minutes of our last planning commission meeting, which was held in May. I sent those out. I didn't get any feedback for corrections or changes, so I take a motion on those meeting minutes for approval.
I move that we approve the minutes for the May 2021 meeting.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Laurie made the first, made motion, and Severn seconded it. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next item of business is a discussion about amending the definition for finished grade, as we have one, and looking at a definition for finished grade plane and a natural grade plane, which both terms are used in our building height ordinance. So let's take a look at that.
I have a suggestion for grade finished. I think that it's probably sufficient the way it is if we eliminate at the front of the building, and everything else would fit with the way our building height ordinance has been reconstructed.
Okay, the finished grade currently says, "The elevation of the finished surface of the ground adjoining the building after final grading and normal settlement at the front of the building." We want to craft something that, I agree, that there's one measurement that I don't think is sufficient, but that will work also for our building height calculations.
Actually, as you read that, we could probably eliminate after settling, because that's really the problem when we're trying to approve a site plan, or approving a site plan, of course, before there's any settling. It's just what's projected to be the finished grade.
Okay, let me read again. "The elevation of the finished surface of the ground adjoining the building after final grading and normal settlement at the front of the building." So what would your proposal be then, as far as wording goes?
Just go ahead and start reading, and I'll tell you when to stop.
"The elevation of the finished surface of the ground adjoining the building after final grading..."
Period.
"...remove and normal settlement at the front of the building."
Right.
Do we, do we want to have multiple locations?
Well, it says in the building, I mean, we could say the perimeter of the building.
"Finished surface of the ground adjoining the building."
So that, to me, means all the way around.
Yeah. Well, I don't know that we need to say perimeter, but if we wanted to add that, we could say the perimeter of the building. But to me, I agree with Laurie, just saying building, I mean, the building means all the way around.
"The ground adjoining the building after final grading." So that would, we still need to talk about finished grade plane.
Right.
Think how we need, what we want to construct there, but...
Is it a problem that there could be several elevations, heights, you know, around the building?
Well, but there's only going to be, there is going to be a finished grade, and it's going to go up and, well, it's not, it will go down.
There'll be different measurements depending on where it's being measured from, around the building.
Right. Some of it may be level, some of it may be slope, it's just one of the finished grades.
But that is the finished grade, okay.
All right.
I like that.
Okay, let's talk about the finished grade plane, then how we want to address that in relation to our building height. Okay?
Okay. Grade finished plane. A plane established from the high point of the finished grade around the perimeter of the building to the lowest finished grade around the perimeter of the building. That's a starting point.
Okay, so we take, like we're doing with the natural a little bit, to take the highest point, wherever that is.
The finished grade.
Right, the finished grade, right. And, and the lowest.
It may be on the same side, it may be on an opposite side, where the low point is, it depends on what the slope of the lot is, and how they're going to finish the grade around the building.
And that would be the line drawn, and that would be the plane for the finished grade that would be projected.
Projected throughout, throughout the footprint of the building.
The only problem I have is the math. Definition of a plane has three points minimum, but the plane, you have to have three points.
Okay, how do we address that?
So if you have a high and a low, the plane, I mean, you could rotate it, right? So that's what we need to say.
Well, if you rotate it, you're going to have a different height line and a different low point.
Well, no, this, this is my high, this is my low.
But if you rotate, you rotate it like here, now, the high is here and the low is here.
We, in our definition...
Because the plane continues.
But it's only around the perimeter of the building. So it has, if this is the foundation wall of the building, it doesn't go beyond that. And if you rotate it, you know, it changes where the high point and the low point is.
Because you would just be in the perimeter.
Now, we, we use terminology points in our building height. We say similarly, the finished grade points will be extended through the footprint of the structure. We don't call it a plane, so I think it's important that we use similar language.
So if we have, this is the plane, then we measure, and there's a high point here, it's measured directly down to this point. If there's a high point over here, it's measured directly down to this point. I understand, you know, your definition of a plane, I'm not sure how to put that in.
But if, if we don't use that word?
Well, see, start reading again, I think if we, okay, say the high point, low point.
Let me, let me back up here a little bit more. "The natural grade is defined as the grade prior to any construction or land disturbance. A line will be drawn between the highest and lowest natural grade points on the perimeter of the structure, which will become the natural grade reference line and will be visually projected throughout the entire footprint of the structure."
Okay, I think right there...
Now, similarly, and we're talking about natural, now, I just give that as a little bit of background. Now, similarly, it says, "The finished grade points will be extended throughout the footprint of the structure."
Okay, so maybe what we need to do is just not talk about plane.
That's one of...
And talk about, say, instead, the grade finished point. A point established, now, it doesn't work.
Why wouldn't it?
I think if you say, read me your thing, you said the high point, the low point.
A plane established from the high point of the finished grade around the perimeter of the building.
Okay.
To the lowest finished grade around the perimeter, or you could say lowest finished grade point around the perimeter of the building.
I think if you say, you take that high point and the low point and project it through creating a plane, because we're having a line and then we're spreading it out and creating a plane that will touch, you know, around the...
I think that makes sense.
So the plane, we're not contrary to...
We're not saying that the two points make a plane, we're saying that the two points have a line which is spread throughout the footprint creating a plane, or projected throughout creating a plane.
I like that.
That way, we're not made fun of saying that our math and engineering terms are wrong.
Yeah, yeah. I'd like to craft the language tonight, so that we...
We have something to present.
Yeah, yeah. To ourselves to vote on with the language and then move it forward from here, so...
So can we say, so, try this one out. "A plane is established from the high point of the finished grade around the perimeter of the building to the lowest finished grade point around the perimeter of the building, projected through the footprint."
Yeah, I think that's good. Because you're creating a plane, those two points, and then it has to go to the foot, it's projected through the footprint. So there you have, you know, at least three points, because it has to have those two, plus it has to go to the edge of the walls and create the plane.
Throughout the footprint.
Yeah.
Can't even read my own right. I used to have it, I don't actually read it, I'm not sure I do.
So, read.
Want me to try to do this again?
Yeah.
Grade finished plane, because we had grade comma finished, and now I'm saying grade comma finished plane. A plane established from the high point of the finished grade around the perimeter of the building to the lowest finished grade around the perimeter of the building.
Lowest finished grade point?
Projected through the footprint of the building.
We want to put point there on that second, lowest, because the first one, you say, we say, I think, refer to that as a point, and to the lowest, then, we...
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll try it again.
Okay.
Grade comma finished plane. A plane established from the high point of the finished grade around the perimeter of the building to the lowest finished grade point around the perimeter of the building, projected throughout the footprint of the building.
Okay.
The only thing I would change is, you have high, and then you have lowest, so I would put highest and lowest.
High point. Or high point and low point, either way.
Yeah.
Although they're consistent.
Same, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it describes what we're wanting to play there with the...
Okay, go on and read the rest, so about the 35 feet.
Okay, I'll start at the beginning.
Okay.
"As the building height is limited to 35 feet or 30 feet if the structure has a flat roof, the height is measured from any and all points of the roof ridges and peaks on the structure directly below to the natural grade reference line or to the finished grade, whichever is lower."
You should say reference line, didn't you?
Well, here it just says to the finished grade, whichever is lower. "The natural grade is defined as the grade prior to any construction or land disturbance. A line will be drawn between the highest and lowest natural grade points on the perimeter of the structure, which will become the natural grade reference line and will be visually projected throughout the entire footprint of the structure. Similarly, the finished grade points will be extended throughout the footprint of the structure. The building height will be measured from the highest roof ridge or peak directly downward to a point along the natural grade reference line directly below that roof ridge or peak or to the finished grade, whichever is lowest. In order for a house in a residential zone to meet the building height, no point of the roof ridge or peak on the structure may be higher than 35 feet as measured from the roof peak to the lower of the natural grade reference line or the finished grade."
Is there a way you can put the words up here and then we can...
The building height, the building height definition?
Yeah.
And maybe, at the same time, Jody, is it possible for you to type in what, what we've got right now for the finished grade? As Severn says it again, can you type it?
You want to just try to read it?
Do you want us?
Yeah. In, in, when it's print, you know, finalized and printed out, would it be better if we had all of the definitions at the beginning and then put the...
In under building height?
I don't know, is that where you put them, or would you put them back in with more definitions? Because if they were in the list of definitions, that would make it seem a lot shorter.
What we could do is, in the building height definition, is just reference. C, definition for finished grade, C, definition for natural grade.
Yeah.
And then people, then they can be taken to the definition for those to...
Yeah, and even finished, or the finished grade plane.
Yes, yeah, I really want to define that.
Wayne and Laurie, I have a question for you, if I could ask it.
Sure.
As we think about these definitions and how Four Seasons is being developed, where the developer goes in and redoes the contour of the land, how does that impact our definition? Does it, does that fit in there okay?
The original contours will be the natural, and when they disturb that, then that will become the finished grade. So it depends on how they, how they address those. If they leave them the same, usually they, though, they have to do something with the finished grade, because there's a slope away from the structure, a two, at least a 2% slope that's required. So they need to modify the natural grade to allow for proper, proper slope for drainage around the structure.
Correct.
And the definitions that we're looking at won't, won't have any adverse effect on that, it's just that those will establishing, those will establish measuring points.
Okay, I was just, wanted to make sure that we were taking that type of development in, in consideration in the definitions.
I, I think we are. There'll be less land disturbance down there than there would likely be up in the hilly part of the city, but the principle would, would still apply.
Okay, I, I was just kind of wondering about that, thanks.
Thank you.
as," I would like to take that out and put it in the definitions, so we don't have to make it so wordy. Although we talked about the, oh.
This is a...
And we talked about that, how the repetition you felt was good, right?
Yeah, I think so.
I think at one of the meetings, we talked about how...
Why don't you read it, Severn?
"A plane established from the highest point of the finished grade around the perimeter of the building to the lowest finished grade point around the perimeter of the building, projected throughout the footprint of the building."
So, can you read that first word again?
"A plane established from the highest point of the finished grade around the perimeter of the building to the lowest finished grade point around the perimeter of the building, projected throughout the footprint of the building."
We've also looking at changing the definition of finished grade by removing a couple of, the current definition says, "The elevation of the finished surface of the ground adjoining the building after final grading and normal settlement at the front of the building." We're looking to remove and normal settlement at the front of the building off the definition. So the definition would stand, "The elevation of the finished surface of the ground adjoining the building after final grading." So it will be high and low wherever the adjoining...
Where it joins the building.
It joins a building. So then, taking that, then applying that to this definition of the finished grade plane.
Yeah, so maybe just a couple of quick questions, I'm wondering just if, to keep it too consistent, because what we say around the perimeter, the other one we say adjoining the building. Natural grades are joining, or finished grade is in that definition, is during the building.
Wait, we said it now.
It's around the perimeter.
No, we're still talking about the ground adjoining the building.
That's right.
Yeah, because, and that's why I was having to read it again, that was my question, around the perimeter, what's that mean?
Maybe we could just say adjoining?
I'm just wondering if we stay consistent, say adjoining, that way it's always consistent where that point is taken.
So...
I could just say if I were, sorry.
So, read, read that again. Severn, read that again and substitute a joint, adjoining with perimeter, if we'd use that.
"A plane established from the highest point of the finished grade adjoining the building..."
So we would need to say, although that, okay, no, we're good. Adjoining the building, okay.
"...to the lowest finished grade point, adjoining the building, projected through the footprint of the building."
Okay.
Now, second question, I'm sorry, through this, probably coming like maybe things you've asked. So we're coming up with a definition for finished grade plane, where does that apply?
In the definition of building height. It's either the finished grade or the natural grade, whichever is lowest.
Finished grade plane or the natural grade plane?
Yes, that's projected throughout the structure.
And is that in this? Because that's what I was just looking at, I see, I see finished grade, but I don't see finished grade plane.
Well, we said, we said natural grade reference line.
We're using the same, we're using points, finished grade points. Rather than plane, we're, we're defining it as a plane, but it felt that if we use plane... Rather than plane, we're defining it as a plane, but it felt that if we use plane here, as Lori pointed out, we, in and of itself, the plane is more than just two points.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, because if we don't have natural grade plane, anywhere, do we have to define it?
Well...
So we're defining something we don't use anywhere.
Do we then just want to change this, instead of grade comma finished plane, saying grade comma finished grade, or just say finished grade points? Make it consistent with this.
But then that changes the definition, because it's no longer a plane, where we're projecting through the house. You know what I mean, I'm just wondering, because we don't use the term...
Natural grade, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, that's not what I really wanted to say. What I wanted to say was, finished grade reference line.
But we don't use that term anywhere.
Yeah, we do.
Where?
Coming down.
Lowest reference line.
Natural grade reference line, I don't see finished grade reference line anywhere.
Well, we said...
I see finished grade points.
It's kind of left out right here, it's implied.
Yeah.
Below the roof ridge or peak, or the that, or to the finished grade reference line.
So do we need to change this then?
This is in the order. We want to leave this.
So then we got to fix something here to make it work with that. You know what I mean? Because we're making a definition for something we don't use anywhere. If someone said, looked for the, you know what I mean, because if someone had said, okay, I'm looking at finished grade, I don't see grade reference line, I just see finished grade. And now we've got a definition for finished grade reference line, they're not going to be able to associate those two.
No, I think the point is...
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
They're just saying we're defining something we don't use. And that could get a little more confusing.
I don't know, maybe we don't need to define finished grade itself, other than what we've already done.
That's what I'm wondering, is because we, if we change the definition of finished grade...
Because right here, we say, you know, to a point along the natural grade reference line directly below that roof ridge or peak, or to the finished grade, whichever is lowest.
Mm-hmm. And we've already, and we defined finished grade.
We've already defined finished grade.
By changing it.
And so maybe we don't even need the definition for finished grade plane. And don't have one for finished grade reference line, because it's not in there.
Yeah.
But we do need to have a definition...
Natural grade.
Natural grade.
Yeah, that one I agree with, yeah.
And that one, when, the way I wrote drafted it out, it basically follows the same way of what I drafted out for the finished grade reference line, or plane.
Oh, yeah. Almost you just changed a couple words.
If you were now.
Yeah.
So we can say, or, ready, natural reference line. A line established from the highest point of the natural grade, adjoining the building, to the lowest natural grade, adjoining the building.
We're using perimeter.
Projected through the footprint of the building.
We're using perimeter here, so we ought to use, instead of adjoining, maybe we should use perimeter in this definition for natural.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that they both...
That's the way I had it written.
Right.
Yeah, just being consistent with the definitions, or how it's used in both cases.
With that with our definition that we have.
Then, I guess...
A plane established from the highest point of the natural grade around the perimeter of the building, to the lowest natural grade point around the perimeter of the building, projected through the footprint of the building. That's what we added before.
And that's, that's called natural grade reference line, right? Is that how we define that?
Yes.
So, I guess the other question I had, do we need to define finished grade point and natural grade point? We say similarly, the finished grade points will be extended throughout the footprint of the structure.
Well...
Do we need to define what that point, we know what finished grade is, do we need to define what the finished grade point means?
It's almost self-defining. Because it says, line moving on between the highest and lowest natural grade points on the perimeter of the structure. I mean, that's pretty self-explanatory, isn't it?
Read, what's the definition of finished grade we have again?
In our, our current definition?
Yeah, or the one we're...
Or what we're proposing.
Yeah.
Good one, the shorter one.
Good, you've got, I don't have it here, I've got what we have.
No.
Okay, the elevation grade finished, the elevation of the finished surface of the ground adjoining the building after final grading.
Period. That was it.
Elevation of the finished surface ground...
Adjoining the building.
Adjoining the building.
After final grading.
After final grading. So then, similarly, the finished grade points will be extended, so finished grade we've defined as adjoining the, joining the building.
To me, it seems like points are self-defining. As long as finished grade is defined...
The highest point, the only point, the highest point and the lowest point.
Here we see the surface, we call it the surface, finished grade, definition of finished grade is the surface adjoining the building, right? I'm just trying to, the only thing I'm thinking through is, and I don't know the answer, these are just questions I'm throwing out for discussion, I guess, I'm not, so, the only thing I'm thinking of, yeah, we just ask a lot of questions, is, could someone, is there any ambiguity? And here's what I'm thinking, if someone says, by definition of finished grade, says that's the surface adjoining the structure, right? So, does that mean it's not necessarily a spot or a point, it's the surface that joins the structure, whereas a finished grade point is a specific spot, point, if you will? And I know intuitively, we think what a point is, I'm just wondering if it's, if it would leave any wiggle room for some, someone to come in and say, well, you say the surface adjoining the building, not a point? Now, we do say lowest point, but I'm talking about, I'm not talking about lowest or highest point, I'm talking about a finished grade point. Because we use that term in there.
I guess I look at it a little bit, maybe equating the term to the highest, do we have to define, if you're just using highest in a definition, do you have to define highest? I see point being the same kind of word, to me, it's self-defining, it's a point. And we define where that point is already in the building height ordinance, so I'm not, again, responding to the devil's advocacy question, I'm not sure that we need to further define point.
I mean, if you had a level line, every point along that line is the same height. Now with Woodland Hills, we don't have too many level lines. Now, this now is the highest point. But if, but if it went like this, and then went like that, and all those along that line, it'd still be the highest point, still aren't along there.
Yeah, and I don't, like I said, I'm just kind of throwing, because I'm reading the one sentence, similarly, the finished grade points will be extended through the, through the footprint of the structure, and we have definition for finished grade, but the finished grade points will be extended throughout the footprint of the structure, so we kind of use finished grade points as a term.
What I'm...
The term needs a definition.
Yeah, what I'm looking at is above it.
Yeah, well, this is just a point, it's not the highest or lowest in this sentence, it's just a point that's extended through the footprint.
To me, I read it as, a line will be drawn between the highest and lowest natural grade points, and then it jumps down similarly, the point, so to me, that refers back to the highest and lowest, just like the sentence before. Did that make any sense?
It does, and I think we get that, and I do, and I'm not saying I don't know, I completely understand, I'm just wondering, if I'm thinking of this as a, as an engineer reading this, and I come and I say, okay, I've got a definition for finished grade, which is the surface adjoining the building, and then the finished grade points will be extended through the footprint. So a finished grade point is that a term different from finished grade, because finished grade references a surface, or a finished grade point, is that a different definition? You know, and like I said, I'm just trying to play, just trying to throw out a way to extend the meeting.
I mean, if you were defining points, it would be, in this sense, a finished grade point, any point...
All the points.
Along that surface.
Finished grades.
Along, along the, which we define as the surface, around the, adjoining the building or structure. So it would be a point anywhere on that surface adjoining the building.
Yeah, and there is the highest, and there is the lowest.
I think I'm okay with that, I'm just, like I said, I'm just trying to, just trying to make sure we don't leave any ambiguity in a way for someone to...
You know, that there be a problem with making a definition of that, if we felt that it would help clear up any...
Yeah, and maybe we, is this, I'm just getting, sorry, I'm probably getting a look up.
Is that part of that wording that's written now?
No.
Okay.
Jody's trying to confuse us.
No, she's saying what we're talking about.
Is this going to city council, or are we going to have another public hearing?
No, this will go to city council.
And they'll have a public hearing?
So we want to come up with a wording tonight.
Are you talking about finished grade or anything about finished grade?
Well, finished grade primarily, now we're starting to think, do we need finished grade points to be the defined term?
Finished grade points, the points where the surface joins the building.
Any point along the surface, any point on the surface that, around the perimeter of the building.
I don't know, I just don't see why we need to define points. Where somebody can say, something is not the highest point, or the lowest point, because those are the critical measures, which is the highest point and which is the lowest point. The other points in between...
But we, on finished grade though, but on finished grade, we don't talk about highest or lowest, when we're talking about finished grade here. We do natural, not in this code, not in this code we don't.
When we talk about finished grade, is there a definition of finished grade that talks about surface in the Woodland Hills?
Yeah, the one, well, the one we're energizing says, is, finished grade is the surface adjoining the structure. See, here we talk about, similarly, the finished grade...
It doesn't say that, Ted.
What, doesn't say what?
It doesn't say anything about surface.
That finished, yeah, sure, that one he just read does.
Read it.
Read that again.
Yeah, it does. Says, "The elevation of the finished surface of the ground adjoining the building after final grading."
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, but, see here, we don't, when we're talking about finished grade, nowhere do we say highest or lowest. We do with natural, but not finished. Finished, we just reference points that are extended through the building.
But the highest and lowest.
But we do say similarly.
But where? Similarly, the finished grade...
It says similarly, that's saying the same.
Similarly, the finished grade points, it doesn't say the highest or lowest points.
Above that.
It has to.
But it doesn't.
It has to. It's there, you can't change that.
No, it doesn't say it in there.
I see, I see what Ted's saying.
See what I'm saying? We don't talk about highest or lowest points when we're talking about finished...
But it's implied. It says similarly.
But that's right.
That means same.
It says similarly, the finished grade points will extend throughout the footprint of the structure.
That's the plane.
But it doesn't say the highest or lowest points, it just says similarly, the finished grade points. Do we need to define, that's what I'm saying. We understand that. If I'm someone coming in reading that cold, do I get that?
Similarly, that means the same.
Similarly, the same to what?
To the natural grade plane.
Well, we don't say that.
We do too.
We say similarly, but we don't say similarly to the natural grade definition.
Will become the natural grade reference line will be visually projected through the entire footprint, similarly, the finished grade points will be extended throughout the footprint.
Which points?
It's saying the same thing as the natural grade plane.
Well, we don't say the finished grade highest and lowest points, we just say points.
True.
So...
It's similarly.
So does...
It's the same.
Does similarly mean we're extending, does similarly mean we're extending the plane the same?
Our English major.
Or are we doing the highest and lowest? That's right, because if I were writing this as an engineer...
I'm a government regulation writer.
If I were reading this as an engineer, I would say, do I extend all points, or do I extend the highest and lowest point?
Similarly, this is the same thing as that underling.
That's what I'm trying to say.
We get that, yeah, I'm just saying, you're an English and I'm engineer, we get it because we wrote it, but with someone else. That's what I'm asking.
How can you argue that similarly means something different than the same?
So we should have just repeated the whole thing again with finished grade.
But we didn't.
But we didn't.
Yeah, if, what, and in reading this, because I was reading it today, going through this, and I was trying to come up with these definitions, I think maybe we should, similarly, the finished grade highest and lowest points will be extended throughout the building. But...
If, if there is ambiguity there, then we can correct that with a definition.
Yeah, and that's what I'm, that's where I'm going with this whole thing.
Leave the...
Do we take the ambiguity yet?
Leave the...
Yeah.
But correct it with the definition, not correct it, but add clarity to it.
No, I'm not saying we have to, I'm just saying, is that something we want to think about, and that's why I bring up the finished grade point issue, do we need a definition?
Well, that's where we started, and we're coming back around to the same point. We're defining both finished grade plane and natural grade plane, that's what we started.
So should we define finished grade points as highest and lowest on the perimeter structure, reference line, and projected through the entire footprint of the structure?
I don't know if that would make, I'm not saying we have to change this, I'm just throwing out some thoughts.
Finished grade reference line, natural grade reference line.
Not in our definitions, I don't think we can.
Why not?
I wouldn't, because we don't, we don't...
You've got a reference line in there.
We don't say finished grade reference line anywhere in that definite, in that...
We say same, similarly.
We say similarly finished grade points, we don't say reference line.
I don't agree.
It's a, it's a, it's a term. You define a term, not a concept.
There's a natural grade reference line.
Yeah, which is a term that we're defining. We don't have a term that's a finished grade reference line. You know what I mean? We say similarly, but we're not defining a term, so, I'm not saying, I don't think we define finished grade reference line at all.
I don't agree, Ted. When we say similarly, we're saying that the finished grade points are the same as a natural grade reference line.
Say that again, Jody.
Define finished grade points as the high point of the finished grade and the low point of the finished grade.
That's a reference line.
I said, pointed out, it doesn't say reference line, when it comes to finished grade.
True, with finished, it doesn't.
Yeah, with finished, we don't say reference line anywhere.
It's the same.
What are your thoughts?
And here's the reason, because we say the lowest natural grade points on the, on the grade points on the perimeter of the structure will become the natural grade reference line, right? The natural grade, similarly, the finished grade points will be extended throughout the footprint of the structure.
To become.
But we don't say to become.
I know, but we'd say...
We're trying to say we're, we're trying to say we're inferring that.
Can we put that in the definition?
I don't like inference. I don't like inference.
Can we put in the definition that finished grade points, a line may be drawn between the highest and lowest and, you know.
If, if I were reading this as an engineer and, and actually doing this on a plan set, I would take a line between the highest and lowest point on my natural grade, and I would draw a line that'd become my reference line for the natural grade. And then I would take a point everywhere around that structure for the finished grade, and I would extend it through the building. Because that's what it's basically coming to do.
Take two points.
I would take two. I would take points around the footprint, and then I would extend it through there. In effect, I'm creating a plane, even though it doesn't say that.
Doing the same thing.
So we have to say, to make it work, we have to say the finished grade points are the high and the low.
Well, I mean, what Ted is basically saying is that if this is the finished grade, all these are points all the way around. And you were drawing, basically, that's the plane.
Uh huh. By the way, it reads to me, we're creating a plane even though we don't define it as a plane.
And it's not that much different between this is the high point, this is the low point, and we're extending it.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with that. That's the way I'd do it if I were an engineer.
The thing is, we've got an ordinance that's been approved. How do we fix the definitions to support the ordinance that's been approved? Or do we want to go back to the drawing board and say, we're sorry?
My thought is, my thought is, we only need to really define lowest natural grade plane, reference line, excuse me, and the finished grade.
Finished grade points?
Or finished grade points, whatever we want to do there.
We've changed the definition for finished grade.
How would we define finished grade points?
The elevation of the finished surface of the ground adjoining the building.
Same way, a point adjoining the building anywhere around the ground on the surface of the finished surface.
So I, I think we can, if we need to do some correction, I think we can done with definition.
Yeah, I agree.
So when we had, right, finished, I mean, notice ahead of me, I'm sorry, Jody. Thank you. Right, finished grade points, and then we define it. And we've already defined it as the surface around the perimeter of the structure.
The highest and lowest.
I don't know if that's going to matter.
I don't know that we need to say that.
Yeah, I don't either.
Because we've got a finished grade all the way around the structure. It's not like natural grade, which may go like this. And we have a high point and a low point, and we're trying to develop a plane and take out the highs and lows on the natural grade reference line. Finished grade reference line, the finished grade is finished all the way around the building. And so it's there, and as long as it's, if it's the lowest, if it's below the natural grade reference line, we use it to measure the high.
But I think we need.
If it's above it, we use the natural grade reference line.
I think, instead of, I think we need to identify it's the highest and lowest. When you take two points, the highest may not be the lowest.
I don't know if you would have to, because the way it reads here, you'll capture the highest and the lowest along with everything else. In effect. In effect, creating.
We're intending to do.
Yeah.
I'm coming around to what Ted's trying to say, and that is you've got a finished grade that goes all the way around the building. It's not, it's there, and you project to become a plane, and it actually doesn't even need to become a plane, because wherever that finished grade is, if it's lower than the natural grade reference line, that's what you're going to measure to.
And that's why I'm wondering, I, this is my personal thought. We've already got a definition for finished grade, right? So we're just going to amend that a little bit. I don't think it hurts at all to add a definition of finished grade point. Then they know from point to point, I need to draw this line between, in the building, all the way around for the finished grade. And it would be this, almost the same thing as finished grade, but rather than saying a surface, we would say a point adjoining the building. Does that make sense? And then I think that solves the issue of this right here.
Is we really measure the height to a point?
Yes.
On the finished grade.
So I'm thinking we just.
Or to a point on the natural grade.
If that point is lower.
If it's lower.
Then, then that's what you use.
Yeah.
So instead of saying surface, you would say points?
I would leave finished grade alone. Well, I would change it like we've already suggested, amend it.
With surface, though?
Leave it with surface, because that could be used for other definitions throughout city code. And then I would just add a definition for finished grade point.
As we talked about before. One of the things we have, you have side planes to see if there are any, at least a 2% slope away from the building for 12 feet from that finished grade.
Yeah. So I would, I would just amend the finished grade definition like we've suggested, and then add a new definition for finished grade point, defining it basically the same way, but instead of saying surface, just say a point.
Give us the wording, your proposed wording.
Read natural grade, like we already have it.
The natural grade is the elevation of the undisturbed natural surface of the ground prior to any excavation or fill.
Of the finished grade. What's our finished grade?
Finished grade. The elevation of the finished surface of the ground adjoining the building after final grading.
I would say, instead of the elevation, I would say an elevation point would be the only really, rather an elevation surface, just say an elevation point adjoining the building after final grading.
So finished grade points would be a point.
An elevation point.
An elevation point of the finished grade.
Of, yeah, adjoining the structure after final grading or after finished grading.
The elevation, the elevation of a point adjoining a building at the finished grade, is that?
Or a point, a point of elevation, an elevational point, I guess.
Elevation point.
Elevation point.
Adjoining the.
Structure?
Structure, building, whatever, the structure.
The perimeter?
No, because that's adjoining.
Okay.
Elevation point joining the structure. At, you have to say at the finished grade or something.
After final grading? Or something like that.
After final grading. Join the structure.
Okay, get rid of the N, first N.
Grandy.
Then basically with that sentence of similarly, the finished grade points will be extended throughout the footprint of the structure. Now they know they take a point, which is an elevation spot, extend, similarly, they extend a line anywhere through that point around the structure which should capture the high and low.
Then the reference to that, similarly, the finished grade, finished grade points will be extended throughout the footprint of the structure.
Uh huh.
Okay, how's everybody feel about that? I think that cleans it up a little bit.
I would, I would change it to say elevation points adjoining the structure after final grading. Not, because it's not just one point.
Yeah.
It's really all the way around. So I'd just say elevation points adjoining the structure after final grading.
I like that.
Okay. Are we good with that? You good with it, Ted?
Yeah, sorry to cause a ruckus.
Okay.
I just think it helped clean it up a little bit. I'd throw one more thing out, but I'll, I'll wait. I'll let people go down.
After that?
Well, no, as I read, so when I was reading, so the building height will be measured from the highest roof ridge or peak downward to a point along the natural grade reference line directly below the roof ridge or peak, or to the finished grade, whichever is lowest. And finished grade is the surface adjoining the building. So even though we've gone through the trouble of defining this, almost creating this finished grade plane. Sorry. We basically just say, measure down to the finished grade, which we defined already as the surface. So it's basically just measuring down to the finished grade. So now I wonder, is there any point to having that?
In the definit, I mean, in the building height?
In the definition of elevation, of finished, finished grade point. So now I'm kind of going spinning backwards on. Because we, we go through the process of creating these extended lines based on finished grade points. But when we have a measure, we're just measuring to the finished grade, which we've defined already as the surface adjoining the structure after final grading.
And it may be more than one.
Uh huh.
You may have, well, you know, a lot of slopes like this. You may have a peak here and the other peak here, and this one is more than 35 feet, but this one's not. And you'd have to step it down in order to stay within the 35. Oh, really? That's my parallel for you.
Maybe, can I draw a picture? Sorry for those online. I'm just thinking, I'm just looking at this and trying to draw this in my head. So we say a finished grade. I'm just going to draw a square house because I'm pretty basic guy. I'm not a cat grafter. So we've got this finished grade all the way around the house. This is an elevation. Here's a plan. We've got these finished grade points, right, all the way around the house? If I'm reading this correctly, we're extending these points like this, right? Extending these points throughout the house and creating this finished surface, if you want. And, but when we're in our definition of finished grade, the finished grade is the surface, which I see as this, that joins this structure after final grading. When I think of our definition of finished grade. So instead of measuring from any, like, spot here.
No, and you're just telling.
We're only measuring from a spot here.
Right.
Right, from this, from the finished grade surface.
Right.
So we're measuring here to get our 35 feet. So now I'm just wondering, does that necessarily help us?
That's not right. That's only 35 feet, 30 feet, because that's a flat.
Oh, wow. Sorry, sorry, 30 feet, because we got a flat roof. That's a box. So I'm just wondering, if this.
So you're saying.
We've got the highest and the lowest. We'll take whatever the elevation is, whatever the highest finished grade is, and draw a line from there to the lowest elevation. And that's our.
What we say here is the highest, here is the lowest.
That's our, that's, that's the line.
But when we're measuring, we're only measuring from the surface out here, right here and right here. We're not measuring anywhere else.
No, but we're projecting that line then to run through that structure.
But I, I agree with Ted. We don't need to do that with the finished grade.
Say our, let's say our finished grades.
Because the finished grade is really all the way around the perimeter of the building.
Let's say our finished grade's right here. Here's our high peak on our house. Hey, this is our finished grade. The way we define the points and using, drawing a line from point to point, here becomes our finished grade surface, right? But when we talk about measuring, we're only measuring from the finished grade, not the finished grade point or the line that we've now created through those points. We're measuring from the finished surface, which the finished surface or finished grade, which our definition of finished grade is the surface adjoining the structure. So instead of measuring from here to here, we're measuring from here to here.
So, so you're going from the peak and you're supposed to go straight down, but you're saying that straight down doesn't touch the perimeter, the finished grade, because that's at the edge.
Based on our definition of finished grade.
Right.
Based on our definition.
Now, wait a minute, though. Let's forget about reference line, all right, for a minute. Let's say that that line you draw, the diagonal line from the two points, from there, no, no, no. From there to there, and that's really the finished grade on that side of the building. We really do measure down to that line.
But that line isn't.
If that's the high, if that line represents.
Yeah, let's say.
A point between the highest and the lowest of the finished.
Let's just say here's our.
Grade elevation.
Here's our, here's our high spot, there's our low spot, here's our line, here's our high point in the house, here's this peak I've drawn right here. Where are we measuring from?
No, I don't think we do that. Let me try something else. All right, so we have, we have.
Yeah, that's right, because my house doesn't do that.
And you go straight down.
I've got a roof that sits in here, this is the highest, and it's equally to this surface, equally to this surface, but my finished grade back here is higher than my finished grade up here. But which finished grade am I measuring from to get a roof line that's in the middle of the two?
Where's the lowest?
What's that?
If this is, if the finished grade back here is like this, you're measuring to the lowest finished grade, remember?
I don't think we say that. We create a line.
We're measuring to that plane.
Or we create the plane, but we don't say the lowest point. We draw a plane from the low to high.
Although, but what you've been arguing all around, all over, is that this is the finished grade. Right? Now, on the backside of the house, I mean, that's the post. The backside of the house, you go up like that. So here, then, is the post that's sliding here, then you're just making, measuring to there.
We measure the lowest, right? But where do we say that? That's my question.
You, you've got to come down, if this is your plane, you've got to come down to here.
But that's just the, that's just the plane on that side of the building.
Then make.
So which side are you measuring?
And the highest is, that's, wherever that is, whether it's backside, front, side to side, that's what you're coming down to.
Here's, I'm going to draw something that's really crazy here. Let's say, and this is going to be hard to project because I need to draw on 3D. I'm not very good at 3D. Let's say the hillside comes across here, so it's finished grade, it's across like this. Your house is sitting. Nearly, I'm sorry, on these things. All right, now, also, let's try to put a Kenner on 3D. This is sloping this way, but it also slopes this way. So now on the backside.
Cancel that one. It's that sloping.
Well, let's say this is sloping away from the foundation, but it's also sloping this way.
Okay.
So it's looking this way. So now, on the backside.
Backside, it's dotted line down here.
Dotted line down here. But my roof peak that I'm trying to figure out sits sort of in the middle of the house, so am I going to this line or this line? I measure. Am I measuring?
Well, maybe if we have a.
Because we don't say.
Yeah. Well, you, we don't, we have a plane that we're looking for.
Which plane?
The, the finished grade plane. From the highest point on the foundation, excuse me, the highest point of the elevation to the lower point of the elevation finished, talking about finished grade.
When you read our definition, when we actually measure, it says we measure to the finished grade. Let's say your reference plane says the finished grade, and then if you read finished grade, our definition of finished grade, it's the surface adjoining the house. So in theory, we're measuring somewhere along the house, not a plane through the house.
No, but that's where similarly comes into play.
No, but, but I, I agree with Ted. We're measuring from here. This is the finished grade along the edge of the house. This is the, this is the peak. This one is measured from there. This one is measured from there.
When they say similarly, we say similarly is how we're drawing the natural grade, or the, the projections through the house. But when we actually talk about measuring, measuring doesn't say similarly. Measuring gills is what it exactly.
You just said the point directly below the highest peak.
Well, if there's no point, because all the rest of the point's up here.
Point, well, you've got a point at the highest peak, there's a point there too. Straight down to a point on that finished grade or the natural grade point. And the natural grade reference line.
We've just talked about with the natural grade reference line.
Yeah, and I have that, that's fine.
And then we say similarly.
That's right. Similarly, the finished grade points will be extended throughout the footprint of the structure.
But then read, read farther down as to how we measure the building height.
The building height will be measured from the highest roof ridge or peak directly downward to a point along the natural grade reference line directly below that roof ridge or to the finished grade.
Now read definition of finished grade.
Whichever is lower.
Yeah, whichever's lower, now read definition of finished grade.
Yeah. The elevation of the finished surface of the ground adjoining the building after final grading.
We're having them measure to a spot adjoining the building, not to a plane.
Not to directly below.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it's still directly below.
Well, if you go straight, like, if this is the house and.
Well, all right.
Point goes straight down here, that's not the point's on the edge.
A roof like this, where the peak, you know, the peak is along here, and then you've got two sides coming up, I mean, directly below is in the middle of the house.
Yeah.
Which is not the finished grade.
But I, I mean, I, if, as I would look at a site plan, I would basically, would end up projecting this line out here to the foundation.
But which side of the house? Would you go to the, to the, what if the grades are different on either side, so you project it this way?
Whichever's lowest.
Whichever's lowest.
Yeah, so if, if, if it's like this.
But when we talk about measuring, we don't tell them to go whichever's lowest, we tell them straight down. Finished grade.
Well, but we've already said, we're gonna use the lowest, whether it's natural or finished. So we've already said that.
We need to, we need to change the definition.
Yeah, you see where I'm think, going with that, is I almost think we need a definition there.
Because it's not intended to measure to the finished grade on the outside of the building. If that peak is in the middle, then it needs to go down to the finished grade reference line that gets projected throughout the structure.
So do we need to say?
And that's where I'm coming back on finished grade points, do we need to redefine that? As the points projected.
How are we gonna measure that?
Just like you do the natural.
Just like you do that, if we can put a definition in there, and that's where I'm going, that's where I think we need to change our definition, natural grade points a little bit.
When you wanna build a home, you destroy the natural grade, but you still have the reference line to use.
Well, I understand, but the point I'm trying to make is, if that lowest, if that point is in the middle of the structure, there's nothing on a site plan that measures the height from the middle of the structure. It's always measured from the outside of the structure.
But that's where the reference line comes into play.
So you're talking about, if it's like this, okay? If it's like this, high and below, all right, that's the plane, or that's the projected points throughout, and the peak is here.
Do you pull that up again, Jody?
How do you measure this point down here? You don't have anything on the plan that tells you what the height is in the middle of the structure. You have it from here, you have it from here, or here, or here, but you don't have anything from the middle.
You project it.
So you can.
How do you project it?
You can have the engineer do it, I don't think that's, but I'm wondering, which side of the house do you measure to? In your reference right there. Where do you measure your 35 feet? Where does it say that? The building height will be measured from the highest roof ridge or peak directly downward to a point along the natural grade reference line directly below that roof ridge or peak, which to me makes sense, or to the finished grade.
That's what needs to be.
It doesn't say the lowest finished grade, it just says finished grade.
Find that finished grade.
Yeah.
For reference, for reference purposes. We should've put in there finished grade reference line.
Yeah, that's where I was can, so I think if we would somehow, we can fix that in the definition, it would.
Something like if you're using finished grade.
Can we change the?
If the finished grade is lower than.
Can we change the definition of finished grade, kinda like we've already done, only maybe at the end, but something like the surface, instead of adjoining this, the, the finished grade, and I'm just spitballing this, so this is not gonna make sense, I'm just trying to think of a way to say, the finished grade adjoining the surface and projected throughout the building footprint.
Okay, how about this? So elevation points adjoining the structure after final grading, or a plane created by projecting elevation points adjoining the structure after final grading.
But that's the definition of finished grade points, right? Not finished grade, which we call finished grade up there. So we gotta change the definition of finished grade.
Where's the finished grade, where's that definition?
That's the one Wayne had. So I'm wondering, instead of saying.
The elevation of the finished surface of the ground adjoining the building?
After final grading.
After fin, and can we say, adjoining the building and projected throughout the structure after final grading? Then that solves this issue. The question then does, is does it raise other issues in other areas of our ordinances?
We could, as it states, and then add, if it is being used for building calculation, then.
Projected throughout the, yeah. And I think that solves this issue right here. And then you're measuring, basically for this, you're using the finished grade, essentially by definition, for this purpose, we've created a finished grade reference line, in effect.
Yeah.
Okay, so how about the elevation of the finished sur- surface of the ground adjoining the building after final grading, which may be projected throughout the entire footprint of the structure?
When used for building height determination, or something like that. That way, if it, it doesn't affect other parts of our ordinance, if it's used in other places of our ordinance, I don't know if it is or not, but, I don't know if it'd matter.
Somebody might let us know if there is, you know.
Sure somebody will. And then really, do we need the definition after, well, we probably better keep finished grade point in there, because that kinda helps us give our, our, create our plane.
Yeah. Do you give us another definition? Let's put another wording together for another. What do we wanna call it? Finished grade plane?
I don't think we, if we don't have a, if we don't use it, I don't think we can define it.
Just add to.
Finished grade.
Put another line. Yeah, add to finished grade. If finished grade is used in building height calculation. Okay, I started it.
I think Lori had a good one going there, just needed to add.
So I had the elevation of the finished surface of the ground adjoining the building after final grading, which may be projected throughout the entire footprint, so.
Or maybe which will be projected throughout the fire, entire footprint, when used for building height determination.
Which will be projected throughout the entire footprint of the structure when used for, in building calculation.
Now, that goes back to Severin's point, of now we've created the, almost this plane through the building.
Well, I think that's what's intended.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so that's, then do we need to require, as part of a plan approval?
Oh, that might be.
But which edge? That's the only question I have. We say, we, you say lowest, but we don't have, we don't have that pointed out anywhere.
Depending on where you go, you may, your elevation, your finished elevation's gonna vary. So you're gonna get people going to the tallest part of finished elevation to make sure that they're not taller than what they should.
And I know intuitively you say. We want lowest.
We want it straight down.
Yeah. Whatever that plane is.
But, again, how are you going to measure that?
You project it.
You can't.
Yeah, you can.
No, you can't.
Just like the natural.
Not without a supercomputer.
How do you measure the natural grade?
Natural, same situation. Because it's, it's gone, you're digging a basement. Whatever natural points you had, they're, they're gone.
I understand that.
But you know what that is.
The reference line.
That's right.
And we're measuring down to that reference line at the outside of the foundation.
That's not what we say, in our natural grade.
Straight down.
We say straight down.
You can't measure it straight down.
Yes, you can.
Show me the calculation.
You've got contour lines.
Huh?
You've got contour lines, you're going.
It's pretty easy for an engineer to draw a line through there.
Through the bottom of that structure, where the natural elevation was.
All right, all right. Let me throw another one at you now. Are you gonna use that with the finished grade?
Same way.
Well, you can't.
Those are called design contour lines, and they're drawn, they don't always, they're not always there.
They're not there.
But they're.
I have never seen one in all the plans.
Yeah.
They're on my site plan. I did them on mine.
That's something, that's something else.
That we'll need to refire now.
They would have to.
That's right.
Give us.
That's right.
And they should've been all along.
You know.
They should've been doing that all along.
It's easier to say, you project the ridge line to the edge of the foundation.
Yeah, but which edge? Which edge? Are you going to this side, this side, this side, or this side?
All of them. They all have to be under 30, 35 feet or less.
Yeah, but we haven't said that at all.
That's not the definition.
That's the problem, we don't say that. I know what we wanna do.
But if you have a peak, the peak is right at the foundation, then it's very easy. If you've got a roof that's like this, and the peak's over here, then the point down below is in the middle of the house.
That's right.
And there is no measurement.
There is.
There isn't. You show me one point in there where there is a measurement in the middle of the house.
The contour lines go through the.
That's the natural. That's not the finished grade.
Design can be, they can do that too.
But they haven't.
You can require it.
Some are.
I haven't seen one yet. I mean, you see more plans than I have, Wayne, but I haven't seen one in all the ones that we've done.
Okay, some of them are there.
Here's my only, my only thought to err into that issue, is if, once again, I'm not an artist, so nor do I pretend to play one on TV. But if you've got a finished grade like this, you've got a house that sits like something like that. So here's your finished grade, here's your finished grade. So you're saying, we're gonna project this out to this spot, and it can't be no more than 35 feet.
Right.
So, what if this then shrinks down to eight feet? Basically, they can't have a story. Can't have a portion of the house, so now their house is gonna slide this way.
Yeah. Plus, that's, I just.
It depends on, if you're measuring any spot, that could be a little tricky. I'm not saying we can't do it. We can, we can require it, because it's just gonna shrink away the house.
But the way our ordinance is from that first peak. The problem with. Straight down, right there. That can't be more than 35 feet.
The problem, the problem with your example.
Right.
Is that that house cannot be built there. Because that slope is more than 30%.
Well.
Because you can't build that house.
True.
Then at the top, they wouldn't have a 2%.
That's not, that is 45 degrees, the way you've driven it, run it.
Well, he said he wasn't an artist, so.
Yeah, I said I'm not an artist.
We'll, we'll give him that.
But, see, not even our definition says this. It doesn't say straight down for finished grade, it just says measure to the finished grade.
It says directly below.
Which we define as these spots out here.
Doesn't it say directly below?
It does for natural grade, but not for the finished.
That's why, that's why we're working on this.
Same, same!
It doesn't say that down here.
Same!
The building height will be measured from the highest roof ridge or peak directly downward to a point along the natural grade reference line directly below the roof ridge or peak, or to the finished grade, which are the lowest. It doesn't say same. This is, so that's how we're creating it. This is not, this is how we're measuring.
That's why we're tweaking.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm leaving for Alaska tomorrow, and I need to go home and get you there. You've still got three people, you've still got a quorum. Let me say one thing, though. Sport court. Which is on our.
Yes.
Get my glasses. Can I read my writing? I need my glasses for sure. We need to change, sport court now says that we use, and I, this may be wrong, but we use basically the zoning ordinance or PUD, or the one, you know, the chart. The thing I was looking at said it was 10-8, 10-8-5. And I don't know whether that's true in the, in the codified version. And what we need to do is change it, to say, where an accessory building over 200 square feet may be constructed as specified in table 10-11-2B. Now, once again, that's in the uncodified, so I'm not sure that my reference number should be.
The idea was to have sport courts meet the same setback requirements as accessory building.
Over.
Over 200 square feet.
Right.
The setbacks are the same for under two feet, or under 200, or over 200.
Yeah, I didn't check that out.
So, it's, um.
And I did check out what I was looking at. So we use the, the chart for the accessory, there are two chart, there are two charts, one for 100, 200, and one for over.
And they're the same. I don't know why they did it, but that, they're the same, so.
Anyway, that, that was the other proposal.
Yep. We're gonna get to that. You're welcome to stay around to get to that, if you want.
And, and I will say this.
The way this is going.
I'll say this, I'm not trying to change your definitions or anything. I'll say this, I'm not trying to change our definitions or anything. I just want to be clear on what we're doing. If we have to tweak definitions is all I'm saying.
But that was the whole part or the whole point of that ordinance was a straight down measurement, whether we're talking to the finish grade or to the natural grade. And both those can be calculated with design contours, straight down. Don't have to go out to the side. I think.
Once again, I have never seen it for a finished grade projected through the foundation of the house. I have never seen a measurement. I I understand we could probably do it with the contour lines for the for the natural grade. But the contour lines for the natural grade are not projected through the footprint either. They stop at the outside.
Some of them haven't been, but.
Not all of them.
But we can start requiring them.
I don't remember even seeing one.
That's how we make the measurement. We'll start requiring them. That's what the ordinance is. It wasn't intended to to come out here and take this measurement here. It intended was to come straight down, either to the finish grade or the natural grade, whichever was lowest. And that's where.
Do we have the photos or the pictures, Jody, that we use to put in ordinance?
The other problem that I thought is the way we're tweaking this in two illustrations that are attached to that ordinance, it won't work.
That's what I'm wondering. That's why I think we need to check that because we got to figure out if they're complying with the illustrations.
In there are as if the peak was out at the foundation line. It doesn't take into consideration a slope like this and measuring down from here.
I think those illustrations were intended to be a cutaway, not at the front or the side of the house.
Okay. But how are you going to measure it? You're going to make them do stuff that they're not doing that way.
Yeah. For the most part. But they, some are.
It would be a lot easier to tell them they project the ridge line out to the foundation. And then it's easy to measure. And those measurements are on the side planes or on the permit planes, not the side planes.
So that's our one for natural grade.
Highest natural point, natural grade, lowest natural point.
Natural grade reference line. So do we have that second one had more of the finish grade in it, didn't it? Right there.
That point is drawn through.
The problem with this illustration, though, is that highest natural point to lowest natural point is projected through the foundation. And it may be higher. The plane may not be straight like this. It may be like this.
Yeah.
And that will work.
Well, that's a generic diagram. It will work any way you want to have that finished calculation.
To me, that, even though it's directly below and you say it's a cutaway, all right, I can accept that. But if we just project that ridge out to the foundation, we're measuring the same thing. And those measurements are on the permit plate. They don't have to add something.
They wouldn't be the same. Severin, with the finish grade, you're going to get, like you say, there's going to be high points, there's going to be low points, going to have a garage over here and and so that that finish grade line is not, I mean, that's just a diagram. It's not going to be a flat line.
It could be.
It could be, yes.
Sure.
But a lot of times it's not going to be.
Well, I know.
And when you start, when you start bringing that line out from front to the to the side of the home, then that that changes everything.
So my, this is, so.
See this natural grade line right here? This is almost how the finish grade goes from, this would be a finish grade line for my house. So as you measure the thirty-five feet here, pretend this is a finish grade, because this is what my house does, right? I got a walkout basement here. So my finish grade's down here on this side of the house. Up here, it's a very basement, so the finish grade's this side on this side of the house. So this would be a finish grade for my house. So is the thirty-five feet being measured here?
No.
Or is it being measured here?
Neither.
Where?
It's measured from the peak down to the line.
So it's measured from here?
No.
That's the peak. He's.
This is the surface.
You're saying. Well, let me let me ask this question.
You're saying right here.
Are you saying that that natural grade line?
Is the finish grade line for my house.
Is the finish grade, is the natural grade lower or higher?
Natural grade was, take that out of the equation right now, because I'm just trying to solve the finish grade issue. Pretend like natural grade doesn't matter.
All right, then it would be measured from that point down to that that line. Not there, no.
To here?
There, yes, because that's directly below the peak.
Well, that's what you were just saying. We don't do a finish grade. You were saying we have to project this out to here.
I'm, no, in this case, I'm not saying.
If it's a finish grade, pretend this is a finish grade.
In this thing, you've got the peak here. Let's say the foundation is out here. There's a roof. The peak is like this, but there is a, I don't know what that slope is called. So I'm saying then this line is projected out to the foundation. So it really is from here to here.
Hey, so they couldn't measure that or something?
No, no, I'm just measuring. You're projecting this line out to the foundation. You know, if you've got the peak there, but if this is one where the roof slopes like this and where the the gutter line is.
We don't care about that anymore.
Well, but we do, because if we're measuring it from there, then it's straight down in the middle of the building.
That's right.
But if you're projecting out to the foundation line, then you're measuring from there to there. And you've got the measurements on the plan.
Okay, now say.
All right.
Just so you know, because I'm starting to, you know, go this direction, but say this sits in the middle of my house. But we're going to project it out. Say this is the finish grade for this side of the house. Now we go into the screen. My finish grade sits here on the other side.
Then you measure to that one on the other side, whichever is lowest.
That's where I'm getting a little lost, because we don't say that in our definition.
Yeah, straight down.
We already say straight down. We just say finish grade.
No, we do say straight down in the first point. We've got to both.
Okay, go back. Maybe I missed that. Can we read that part?
Can you go back to the definition? I think it's at the very top. It says both, straight down on both of them.
Yeah, it says the height is measured from any and all points of the roof ridges and peaks of the structure directly below to the natural grade reference line or to the finish grade, whichever is lower.
So it's directly below, so so then we have to so then that comes back to tweaking our definition on finish grade. That Lori read, I think, and that almost to me solves the issue.
Yeah, read it as you thought.
Okay, the elevation of the finished surface of the ground adjoining the building after final grading, which will be projected throughout the entire footprint footprint of the structure when used to measure building height.
Then going back to our that that then helps us measure down like we've already defined. Can you scroll up to the top, Jody? Yeah, because we do say direct. The highest height is measured from any and all points of the roof ridges or peaks to a structure directly below the natural grade or reference line or finish grade, whichever is lower. So if we use that definition, I almost think that solves it.
The only thing to me is in this finish grade, it doesn't say like high and low. It takes all the points to kind of.
Basically, you're.
Solve with the definition.
Basically, you're you're creating a plane with every point around the building. So in effect, you'll capture the high and low. We just don't say that specifically.
Jody, come down a little bit. Let get take Lori's definition. With finish grade is used in the for building height calculation. Yeah, leave that where it is right now. If we're going to use that, I'd suggest we switch it just a little bit with that. If finish grade is used in building height calculation, then the elevation of the finished surface, so it's up front what that.
So this is.
Consider it at the end of the sentence.
This would be our new definition for finish grade, right?
Yes, I kind of added to. Leave it the way it is, but then say if finish grade is used in building height calculation, the elevation.
So it's a period after final grading, period. And then say.
So the elevation of finished surf, so our definition for finish grade is the elevation of the finished surface of the ground adjoining the building after final grading.
Period.
Period. That's our definition for finish grade.
And then.
And then this finish grade will be projected throughout the entire structure or the finish grade will be projected?
Or did you say if used to.
We want to say the finish grade points.
We could do that. Or do we need to up that, put that in the finish grade points definition?
Let's see, how about if used to measure building height, the high and low finish grade points will be.
Yeah.
If.
Will be projected.
Yeah. Will be projected. You can just delete that, this finish grade, and then that will take care of the rest of it. Will be projected. Keep deleting. Keep deleting. There we go. Whoops. Throw out and delete the period.
Okay, how about if used to measure building height, a line containing the highest and lowest finish grade points?
I think by projecting it, we kind of create that line, don't we?
Okay.
Used to measure building height, the highest and lowest finish grade points will be projected throughout the entire building structure.
I guess we don't need that last little bit when used to measure building height, because we say that if used to measure building height, it starts.
Yeah.
It's redundant. Then we've got the definition for finish grade points.
Line created by the highest and lowest finish grade points will be projected.
Yes.
Create a point, create a point throughout the entire.
And we say if used to measure building height, plane created by the highest and lowest, by the the highest and lowest finish grade points will be projected. Take that, yeah, take that out. No. Take the first part out, leave the highlighted.
Those are finished grade points. And then the second part.
It's finish grade.
Finish grade.
Yeah, finish grade points, and that'd be a new definition. And then the one below would be a revised finish grade definition, right?
Added to finish grade definition.
I think that first part's also part of what's in there already, isn't it? That first sentence, the elevation of finished surface ground. I think that's what we have right now.
Yeah. So that'd be new. Or, yeah, revised finish grade.
Yeah.
Definition.
Should be revised, finish grade definition.
Okay, are we good with that? Different, Severin?
On his practical concern. You're not going to be able to do it.
What part are you still concerned about?
How are they going to create that line?
Measurement at the bottom of that line. I'll show you, Severin. I'll show you some, when you get back, some contours.
Typically, we'll draw, at least when we've done buildings, we draw cross sections or cut sections, we call them the building. So you draw a building. I don't know. I haven't seen a lot of plans up here. My plans have had different cut sections on it, looking at it like they have the entire building in plan view, and then they'll show cut lines through it. And then on the next sheet, they show different cross sections with cut different ways throughout the house. with cut different ways throughout the house. Then on there, you can project these natural grade or finished grade lines. But as long as you have the topo, they should be able to do that.
Okay, do we want to make a motion on?
They'll just have to require it.
Approving those? New definitions? Yeah, revised.
Do we need natural grade reference line definition? Or do we define that in the code?
Yeah. The elevation of the undisturbed natural surface of the ground prior to any excavation or feeling. That's fine.
That's fine. But we need to define natural
Natural grade reference line.
Okay, so can we take our finished grid and use that except put before before what? Before grading? Before any grading or land disturbance?
You gotta do the high and low point.
Yeah.
Okay, so take the elevation.
Reference line established from the highest point of the natural grain around the perimeter of the building and the lowest natural rate point around the perimeter.
Re-reference line created. The only suggestion I would have to be just consistent with our finish grade is that in around the perimeter, I'd maybe say adjoining the structure. Adjoining.
Important is talks about a line will be drawn between the highest and lowest natural grade points on the perimeter of the structure. Which will become the natural grade reference line. Will be visually projected throughout the entire footprint.
I think on the perimeter works too. Just around the perimeter was the only, if it's on the perimeter, then. Yeah, around or on versus around would be the to match what we're saying above. So instead of saying around, say on the perimeter. And then that matches what our.
What do we say on?
I would say on, yeah. On the perimeter, then it matches what we say above, doesn't it, in the actual building height code? Yeah.
Say building which is projected or just building projected?
Say will be in the other one.
The end of that grade finished revised part and further.
Say reference line created from a line. Created by a line from the highest point.
As I said, reference line.
Want to say a line in there or not?
How about say it? At the beginning.
Line, yeah.
How about reference line created through? It's going through those two points.
That's wrong.
Yeah, I would say from. Because you're going through the structure, but not through those points.
Okay. Anything else with those definitions?
The only other thing I have. That we didn't really put it on. There. I don't know that we need definition of basement. In fact, now it's less change in the finished grain.
I wonder the same thing about story.
Well, I, and I thought about the same thing.
There, and I don't know if they're tied into any building code and things.
But basement is tied into their definition of finished grade. Because the basement is now defined as the four feet below the adjoining finished grade. And finished grade is at the front of the building.
We just changed that, right? So it's no longer at the front of the building.
I know.
Yeah.
But.
So now you're saying, do we need definition of basement?
Four feet below the finished grade. How are you going to have a walkout basement if it's four feet below the adjoining finished grade? Because the finished grade is all the way around the building. That's why we need to fix the basement definition. That was the problem I had in the beginning with the basement definition, because I did not understand the finished grade was defined in front of the building. And as soon as I understand that, then I have no problem with a walkout basement. Because to me, the adjoining finished grade was at the back, not at the front.
Let's, uh, let's look at that for another time, but I, there, there may be some.
Yeah, it's a good point, that.
Why we really need a definition of basement or a definition of story?
I'll, I'll talk to Corbett about that too and see if those are eliminated, if there's any adversity on anything else. Any other code issues.
Because the story was really tied in the height definition.
Yeah.
Saying thirty-five feet or to the stories. And the basement was tied to it too, because the basement was not considered a story.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Since we've eliminated stories from the building height definition, seems to me that we should eliminate both stories and and that's, that's my.
Yeah, I think that's a good point.
Okay. Want to make a motion on these changes? Definitions?
Okay, wait, I have one more thing that I don't know if I'm just being dumb, but, okay, so on the natural grade reference line, look at the very bottom row where it says which is projected. Could we put, uh, let's see, perimeter of the building to the lowest point on the, let's see, to the lowest point in the perimeter of the building, period. This will be projected. Is that bad to change it that way?
And which call down, Jody?
She just, oh, she just gave you a, a copy of it?
A copy.
Yeah. So on.
I didn't bring my glasses, though.
Perimeter of the building, period. This will be projected. This is, you know.
I think that, I think which is gives some more, gives added continuity to that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Instead of making a sentence.
Just kind of, yeah, I don't know, just.
I'm not an English major. I'll go either way.
Let me look up at the definition above. It sounds good, because it says that the natural grade reference line will be projected. So it's like, I'm just thinking multiple lines. I don't know. You all think that it's good this way. To me, it's sounding like a plane instead of a line.
Well, we got your points, because it can be a plane.
They used to guess in the building to the lowest point on the perimeter of the building, period. And this is projected throughout the entire footprint.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, maybe. Maybe we should keep it this way. Because up above on the grade finished, it says.
Happy to allow.
Well, it says if used to measure building height, a plane created by will be projected. And here we have a line projected.
Because we're trying to use the same terms that are in the
Yeah.
In the building height ordinance.
I'm just trying to think of somebody might create a sentence. Which will probably happen anyway.
To be able to accomplish that. It doesn't matter what we do.
Okay. Okay, let's leave it.
We good? Okay. Do I want to make a motion?
So moved. What's the most, so a motion to
Accept the wording that.
To accept the wording of the definitions?
The definitions and changes that.
Changes to the, okay, I'll make a motion that we recommend to city council the revised definitions for finished grade and the addition of the new definitions of finished grade points and natural grade reference line.
Okay.
Second?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. What are the setbacks sport courts? I, I think Severin's the one that first pointed this out, as we were reviewing site plans, and I think it's there's, there's no, uh, there's really no criteria now.
Well, there is, but it's it says.
It says the, the house setback. That's what sport courts have to follow up.
So you'd have to be thirty feet if, if you're in R1, S2, PUD. Thirty feet from the back, fifty feet from the side. And yet we allow an accessory building, even one over two hundred square feet, to be five feet from the side and ten feet from the back one. Why?
Five feet?
Yes.
Yeah. So it just kind of doesn't make sense to
Thirty feet from the front.
Allow setback, to allow accessory buildings.
Which could be large and imposing and a sport court is flat.
Does it, just tossing this out, thinking through things, does it have anything to do with lighting? So sports courts, sometimes you get those big floodlights that you could have there.
Yeah.
Another opposed either way, just one of the, it's the only reason I could think of, that might have been thought about. Yeah, probably not.
Ten feet on the side.
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking sound, maybe, because they can be loud, but that, you know, distance isn't.
Louder, louder?
Yeah. I, I haven't looked at it, but I'm guessing most communities will allow sport courts to be closer than a house to a property. I don't know. Has that been looked at?
I would think so. I mean, swimming pools. They, we allow them.
How close? Five feet? Are they on swimming pools?
Um.
If we become a dark sky community, that will fix that anyway.
Swimming pools. Setbacks of swimming pools, spas, hot tubs shall meet the yard setbacks. So they're at the house.
So they're with the house.
Swimming pools are at the house setback. Call it yard setbacks.
They have to be thirty feet.
Thirty or maybe fifty in the front, depending on.
Well, you can't have them in front.
Well, that's true. So not.
Your front yard.
No front yard.
In your front yard.
And put a pool in the front.
What if it's a blow up, what if it's a blow up inflatable kid pool?
Temporary.
As long as it's fifty feet back?
I knew it was about permanent structure. But who knows? Somebody may interpret it that way.
Well, I think five feet is fine, and if the city council wants to change it to another number, they can do.
Seems to me if we allow accessory buildings that close to the sport court.
From the city council that built his sport court closer than what he should be.
Oh, maybe we shouldn't approve it, because then we could be criticized for catering.
That's not the reason why. For us, it just doesn't make sense.
Okay, take a motion on sport court changing. There are setback requirements to the same as accessory buildings.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we change the requirements for sports courts to be the same as accessory buildings.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. Next thing is we have a conditional use permit from Summit Creek. Let me share with you, I have one copy here. They want to have a sales office over there and they're suggesting that it be, they bring it in on trailer, on wheels. They may, they'll put a, probably put a skirting around it. We're looking to locate it in the parking lot of where their mail facility is. We're gonna have to change some configuration over there a little bit to do that. And it'll be a, probably a long-term temporary structure. Eventually they'll take it out. But as we, and I've talked to them about it, as we've looked at it, that seems to be the best alternative for them and work with the city as a conditional use permit for this building there that they will use as a sales office. It won't be lived in, it'll only be worked in. They will have.
Is it kind of like these construction trailers that they bring out to construction sites? I'm guessing, VCO, something like that, yeah.
Constructed specifically for this. They'll tie it into their sewer system that they have there at the back of the parking area for the their mail facility, they have a sewer line that comes down there, so they'll tie it into that.
So how, will they like the sewer impact be? Maybe get reimbursed when they disconnect or something, I don't know. But they worked that out with Casey.
Yeah. So that's the essence of the, of what they want to do with their sales office.
I mean, there is in the current ordinance, part of it that almost covers what they want to do. It talks about temporary buildings, including trailers. Construction management supervision offices. Anyway, the, the only thing in there is it's temporary sanitation. It's got to be tiny.
Yeah, and I guess it would be a long-term temporary kind of situation.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Well, it's not that far away from what we already said. It's just maybe a longer term.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
So I don't really have a problem.
Yeah, I don't either.
Any other questions? A, let's take a vote on approval for that motion?
I move that we recommend to the city council that Summit be given authority to place a trailer on a long-term temporary situation, tie in to the sewer line and water lines.
Okay.
Second?
Second, all right, all right. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Craig is recommending that we change our city ordinance having to do with fire suppression sprinklers. Uh, this is a note he sent, "I've included new wording for our sprinkler requirements. The state has added the interior alarm devices, so I have added it to the wording. It looks like during the certification process, they left out garages and the test port. I removed any items that were written in thirteen D due to redundancy." Severn smiles because he had to have a sprinkler system in a non-heated separated shop. They made him put it out, but he's glad he's done it now. Anyway, this is what it says, "Fire sprinkler systems, all new construction of any structure and construction that constitutes more than fifty percent expansion of any structure shall include an automatic fire sprinkler system which complies with the Fire Code, National Fire Protection Association, thirteen D requirements, and related regulations and standards adopted by the city, modified as follows. A, fire sprinklers shall be required in all heated areas, living areas, garages, and mechanical or furnace rooms except in a detached garage separated from dwelling, from the dwelling unit or main building by more than twenty feet and having a floor area of less than two hundred square feet. Also, sprinkling systems shall be provided with an exterior inspector's test port, which is a Woodford Model sixty-five exposed type or B sixty-five wall hydrant or that complies with other specifications or other material approved by the fire chief. And C, both interior and exterior water flow alarm devices are required. Location will be approved by the fire chief." So I don't know what the changes are from, but that's what the changes are being recommended by the fire chief to be incorporated. Likely in title, what do we say, Jody, title four? Title five? Or possibly to our. Say it again? Two, B one.
D.
D as in David. Okay? So that's where that would go. Doesn't require public hearing, but requires approval by planning commission city council. It's an ordinance change. So, um, anyone want to make a motion on that?
I'll move to make the changes as recommended by Chief Northrup to title five, four, D.
One.
One.
Okay, I have a motion, you're second.
Second up.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Here on the table, we, we discovered a while back that the church never gave us a final plat for the new state center. And so that's what this is, so we're reaching back a little bit to approve the final plat for the state center. I don't know what happened if I had to get that back then, but you can blame Byron.
If we don't approve it, then you can have it.
Yeah, disassembled. So, Laurie?
I was gonna say, some people have been asking for things to be disassembled.
They don't meet codes, then take them down. So that's what the final, the final plat. City council for their review and approval. Somebody wants to make a motion to approve the final plat?
Oh, we approve the final plat.
Okay, Severn?
The Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints.
With your membership in, uh, in good stead. Okay. I don't.
So that's not how it works?
I got a first, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Um, one thing I'd like you to look at for the next meeting, a little bit, there's some inconsistency with our, how we are calling our roads in the city between the development and construction standards and our general plan. The, um, the design of them is, there's no difference there, I don't believe, but they're identified different ways, classified different ways.
You mean like collectors, okay.
Collector, miner.
Right.
That sort of thing. So I'd like us all to look at, at the general plan and our development, construction standards, and let's sync them up. So that there's uniformity in the way that we are talking about the roads that we have in the city. But I, I don't, it's probably easier to change the development and construction standards, no. I don't know. Look and see where, if you feel where the best way to make, make the change is on them. Uh, the development, construction standards are what are used generally in defining. It's not in the general plan, so we may want to change the general plan to have the same terminology as the development, construction standards. But I'd look for feedback from all of you that give recommendations.
Is the general plan online?
I think so. Jody, is the general plan online? It's not, it can be, it can be put out there, we've got a new.
I think it is.
I, I think it's.
This was just yesterday, I think, we've got a new website. The city does.
It is, okay, I know the construction standards are, if it's on there, then, okay, yeah, we can just pull it off there. And the general plan is too, so they're both there, okay.
Take a look at that and we'll put it on next month's agenda. Anything else, did anybody?
Think the Jazz are winning?
No?
No, they're gonna go down with the Clippers, aren't they?
Even with Kawhi not playing?
Very well, take them.
I think, um, I'd like to have a discussion on the setbacks for corner lots. I still don't understand why we restrict them.
I think that'd be a good one to have on one of our meetings. I would agree, I had to go through, on ours is a corner lot, and I had to go through a peel process to get it changed. Because I couldn't fit a house on there with the.
Increased side setback.
Yeah, because you have basically two fifty-foot setbacks. And I really think that should only apply to the side of your driveway. I understand why it's that way, but, but I couldn't fit my house on there that way, so I had to go to the peel process, so you put it in. They were really good, gave me the, granted me the, the conditional, what do they call that?
So you got, you have a fifty, you have fifty foot, why do they allow you on the side then?
Thirty, to be a regular side. So what it was, I had.
Your front's got fifty, is it?
Yeah, my front is, but, but, um, so the way it was, I had a fifty and a fifty, right, two setbacks. I couldn't fit my house that way, so I had to get a fifty and a thirty, that's what I got, to match a normal.
And isn't your front a thirty?
I think it's fifty. I'll have to measure, I'm pretty sure it is.
Are you in a. Side is fifty.
I'll have to pull up my site plan, but I think I got it with my, maybe my front was fifty or thirty, I mean.
Are you in a, a two? R1, two, PUD?
PUD, yeah.
Yeah.
It's supposed to be fifty, fifty.
The front is fifty and minimum side is fifteen.
See, but on a corner, it's fifty, yeah. Corner lot is fifteen, fifty, and that's the issue I had, so I had to go get a, three, variance.
They just let you vary a little bit, not to the full fifteen.
Not to the fifteen, I went to the thirty, which worked fine, so I didn't push it.
Well, I think it's your front that's thirty.
Could be, I'd have to measure.
I wondered about that. Somebody asked me, how did, how did Ken get his house so close to the, to the road?
I just didn't tell anybody. I just didn't tell anybody.
You just did it.
I just did it, didn't tell anybody. It's like I do every, it's, it's like I do things in my marriage. I do it, then I ask for forgiveness later.
Is this being recorded?
Yeah.
Oh.
And where you, where are you staying at night?
Yeah. See, I don't know if she catches on to that yet, now she does.
I move to re-adjourn.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for being here.
I'll have to check, you might be right, Severn, I know I got fifty on one side and thirty on the other. And I showed it on my.